All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Please rise for the flag salute.
The Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral home edge of the Sika people who have lived in Sika since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Sika, and their enduring care and protection of Sika Ani.
Mr. Ryu. Don, can we do the roll call, please?
Blossom Teal Olsen.
Here.
Todd Gebler.
Here.
Paul Ryu.
Here.
Aitana Gluth.
Here.
Andrew Haynes.
Here.
Amy Morrison is absent and excused.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda?
Moved to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented. Any public comment to the motion? Any board discussion? Great, and I think we need to do a roll call vote on this, please.
Blossom Teal Olsen.
Yes.
Todd Gebler.
Yes.
Paul Ryu.
Yes.
Aitana Gluth.
Yes.
Andrew Haynes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, special reports. Do we have anyone from government to government this evening?
I'm Rebecca Himshut with the Sika Assembly. We're here, listening. Thank you.
Ms. Himshut. Anybody else from government to government this evening? Anyone online? No? Uh, moving on to item seven, which is recognitions. Um, first off, as everyone in the room, most people in the room probably know, this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. I believe yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day. So how wonderful to have so many teachers here now that we can say face-to-face thank you for the hard work that you do and the unprecedented times that we've been through in the last couple of years. And as a board, I can say for everybody that we're, we are here for you, or we do this for you and for the wonderful staff through our buildings. Um, and we just want to take a minute to say thank you, uh, for all of the hard work that you do. Uh, we pay tribute to educators who empower students across the country with the knowledge and skills they need to reach their potential and achieve their dreams. Board recognizes educators' positive impact on the lives and learning of students and dedication in helping students achieve their dreams. And we want to wish you a happy National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we thank you for making a difference in every day in the lives of our students. Uh, next, under recognitions. Uh, the Spirit of Youth Award recipients. If you would mind, thank you.
Uh, if you're here, would you step forward, please? Stephen Harmon, Darby Osborne, Eliza Dillon-Dumag, Tyler Barton, Desiree Ballengut, and Isabel Williams. What? Oh, you want me to go to him?
Sure.
You can hear me? You can hear me? Uh, the Spirit of Youth program is, excuse me, I'm going to start over for that one. Spirit of Youth is a program that recognizes Alaska youth for going over and above in their community. These students have been nominated for making positive contributions in our community. The Spirit of Youth honors youth entrepreneurs, activists, volunteers, role models, creatives, culture bearers, environmentalists, and more. Nominees are eligible to be selected as Spirit of Youth finalists who, um, nominees are eligible to be selected as Spirit of Youth finalists who receive up to $2,000 for a college scholarship. So we wish you good luck with those.
Congratulations. There are certificates. We'll get the other certificates to the students. Thank you, Paul, and Mr. Hauser. Uh, the next group we'd like to recognize are our National Honor Society tutors that tutored at Blatchley Middle School this year. Uh, if you are here, please come up. Addie Poulsen, Stephen Harmon, Asa Dow, Darby Osborne, Raisy Guillory, Jesse Christner, Anna Prushen, Tyler Adress, and Macy Steinson.
I'll take the mic. Online, online.
Oh, online. Yeah, yeah. You're loud, but not.
Now I, now I have to talk quietly, or it'll be deafening. Um, so this year at Blatchley, uh, we started an after-school tutoring program free of charge, Monday through Thursday, from 3:30 to 5:00, um, for students who needed it. Um, a big shout out to a lot of people who made that possible. Our Merricor Sung Bong, who is not here, Ms. Rogers and Ms. Fulton both have stayed, um, either together or separately each day till 5:00. And a big shout out to our National Honor Society kids because they came down on a daily basis as well and helped tutor the middle schoolers. A lot of adults find that intimidating. A lot of adults are like, "Man, middle schoolers, whoa." And these guys handled it great, and without them, we would not have been able to give the support to all the students that came. We had at least 25 each day. We had to turn kids away because we just couldn't handle the volume. So we really do appreciate you guys coming down. It was hugely helpful. Um, sometimes it's like herding cats when you're working with 12- and 13-year-olds, and they did a great job. So thank you very, very much.
Such a great experience for our students. As you all know, there's no better way to learn something than to try to teach it to somebody else. So thank you for stepping up and doing the tutoring. Uh, moving along to item eight, persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A timer is used, and a sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted. Members of the public are referred to board policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3, and associated administrative regulations, as well as to Board Bylaw 9323A for information about how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. If any persons to be heard, uh, please come up one at a time, and please remember to turn the microphone on. You'll see a red light.
Good evening. My name is Mike Viera, currently serving as the SEA president. Um, I want to start by saying again how I've said all year long that we appreciate the service that you guys provide to us, and I try to tell everyone that will listen to me that this is the best board that we've ever had, and I truly believe that. So I, I really appreciate the ability to chat with you guys formally and informally. I appreciate the ability to chat with Mr. Hauser formally and informally, and I feel like we have a, a good working relationship. Yet here we are, um, I think adamantly disagreeing about where we are with our contract negotiations. I've stood before you every month this year to offer my ability to chat with you. I've expressed, um, concern, I've expressed alarm, and now I'm expressing severe frustration that we find ourselves in the place that we find ourselves. The time is now to make a significant contribution to the compensation of our members. Our entry-level members currently rank fourth in our region. Our median salary is seventh, and our top salary is ninth out of nine people that we've ranked in our region. The proposal that we have on the table currently is really just the cost-of-living allowance. We're asking for a reasonable cost-of-living allowance. It would move us up to second in the entry level, but only move us to sixth in the top for our region. In the past decade, we have twice taken a 0% raise, seven times we've taken a raise of less than 2%, and five of those were 1.5% or less. During the eight fiscal years that are listed in the budget book, the district has ended each year with an average fund balance of $2.3 million. According to a analysis of the budget by NEA Alaska, in FY19, the district had 21.45 million in revenues, 21.2 million in expenses, with a surplus of $242,000. In FY20, the district had 21.83 million in revenue and 20.83 million in expenditures, almost a surplus of 1 million during the year that SEA took a 0% raise. In FY21, the district had 21.67 in revenue, 21.1 million in expenditures, a surplus of $632,000 during the year that we took a 1.25% raise. The proposal on the table has a total cost of new money to the district of $225,000 approximately. The district has an anticipated fund balance at the end of FY23 of $712,000. They have not budgeted $140,000 of secure rural schools money and approximately $600,000 that is likely to come from the legislature. The fund exists to meet our requests and maintain the fund balance of 4% that is requested by Mr. Hauser. We can do this. The time to do it is now. What I haven't heard during this year is what is the plan? The plan so far expressed to us is that our members are going to absorb all the cost-of-living increases that we do in this town, and if you want to continue to teach in Sika, you have to be prepared to do that. We don't have to do this separated from each other. We can do this together. We can work on a plan, but we need a plan. What is the plan to make this a place that is competitive with salary and compensation? Let's work together. Let's figure out a plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Viera. There you go.
Hi, my name's Kaylee Martenson. I teach at Bearinoff Elementary School. First of all, also thank you for letting us, um, speak here today and for listening to our concerns. So I wanted to share my concern for the future of my teaching career. Um, many of us educators here have been discouraged and frustrated by the current status of our negotiation process. And to be honest, I don't know how we even got here. Um, I thought we'd be at a, at a, at an agreement by now. Um, this community is known for coming together and figuring stuff out. We value the part that every community member plays, but I honestly don't feel valued. Many of us don't. We've bent over backwards to stay open during COVID when the majority of schools nationwide closed their doors. We have taken on heavier loads to support our students with increased social-emotional needs. Our students need more, now more than ever, and I can't give much more of myself. Um, I'm exhausted. We, as educators, do not go into the profession for the money and the fame, but we still desire a fair and competitive wage. Currently, our salaries have not kept up with inflation. Our salaries barely cover the cost of living here in Sika. Any educator hired after 2006 is also fighting for a future retirement. We have been encouraged by outside financial advisors to invest in separate retirement accounts if we want a chance of future success. Um, I can't contribute to that very much because I'm simply trying to just cover my cost of living. Um, Sika's, Sika's teachers used to be some of the best paid in the state, and now we're some of the lowest. I know at least 10 colleagues who have left in the last couple of years for better-paying salaries and more supportive work environments. The time to fix this is right now. Teachers don't often make noise unless we absolutely have to and it's absolutely necessary. And usually, the noise we make is to advocate for our students. Advocating for fair and competitive salaries for teachers may not seem like it directly links to our students, but it does. Teachers who are fairly compensated and feel supported by their administrations have higher rates of job satisfaction. Those with higher job satisfaction in turn feel more passionate about their jobs and want to learn and provide more for their students. If you care about keeping the workforce that you have here behind me, and if you care about providing quality education for all the students that come through our door, please seriously consider what our union membership has brought to the negotiation table. Stand with your teachers to support Sika's students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martenson.
Hey, everyone. Um, thank you for your time tonight. Um, my name is Morgan Infijan. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Bearinoff Elementary. I've been teaching now for nine years, and I've been lucky enough to work for six schools for four years. Um, I felt compelled to speak at this meeting tonight, ironically, on Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, the NEA recently surveyed teachers across the US and found that a staggering 55% were considering leaving the profession earlier than they'd planned. We often hear the phrase "teacher burnout" used in discussions regarding teacher retention. However, what we've been experiencing, especially in the last two years, is beyond burnout. We have not been burned out. We are demoralized. The system is setting us up for failure. The root cause of educator exhaustion is a severe lack of support and respect, not a perceived inability to manage stress. At this point, a lot of us are just struggling to make it through the day. Before all the staff shortages brought upon us by COVID, we've already been dealing with less and less time for collaboration, high-stakes testing, lack of a living wage, a decline in mental and physical health, and the silencing of educator voices. The combination of all these things has eroded any moral gratification teachers may experience. If we are serious about getting every child the support they need to thrive, we need to address this crisis now. There has never been a better time than right now to do what we can to make sure teachers are taken care of so they can focus their time and attention on what is best for kids. There are too many educators on the verge of just walking away. At this point, it seems clear that the only reason the education system hasn't fallen apart is because the teachers and the school staff are holding it together. The mindset has always been educators are driven by dedication to their students rather than the money, so they should selflessly absorb the overload and stress of working in underfunded public schools. We need to end that kind of thinking. It is toxic for teachers and staff. Recruiting and retaining quality educators has always started with professional salaries. According to the Economic Policy Institute, teachers on average are paid almost 20% less than other college graduates. Across Alaska and the rest of the US, districts are increasing teacher salaries. Sika has one of the highest cost-of-living in the state, so it only makes sense that we would follow suit with the rest of the state in order to pay staff a living wage, especially with the drastic increase in inflation we are experiencing. Every year, we are faced with a lack of funding and position cuts, all the while being asked to do more and more, but with less. We are being asked to defend the learning that takes place in our schools while trying to protect the teaching positions we already have. We are pitting building against building to fight to keep our current teaching positions in place. It is no wonder teachers are looking for other career options. We are coming to you to be a part of the solution, not to cause more teachers to walk away. Thank you for your time and your efforts.
Your comments. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
My name is Judith Yanya. Uh, thank you again for, uh... I am coming to an end of the ninth year of my teaching career. I taught four years at Bearinoff, and now I've been at... Um, I'm not going to reiterate some things I wanted to talk about because I think we all know the trauma and, and the mix it caused, and the dedication of our teachers. Um, as a parent and a teacher, I've been lucky to see the, the teachers in this district have, um, such an impact on the children that they teach, and I know that they love their job. Uh, it is hard to be able to go to the store lately and buy things. Uh, I had a lettuce, it was $5 the other day. That's, um, crazy to me. And just reiterate, uh, we, we need better salaries. And in order to live here and to keep up with the economy, we have to, we have to be able to provide for ourselves and our families before we can provide for the students. Currently, I'm working three jobs. Uh, it's exhausting, and I don't want to do that because I don't want to be able to give to my students, um, as well as my own kids, um, better of myself. Again, I know you value the education of the children in this community, and in order to do that, you have to value the education and the teachers that provide that education in, in this community. Be the force, be with.
(laughing) Thank you for your comments. I was going to mention it was Star Wars Day, but Teacher Appreciation Day is more important. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Hello. My name is Ryan Myers. I teach math at the high school. Uh, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. Uh, first of all, I have been teaching for nearly 20 years. I've taught around the world. I've taught in a lot of places, and I've spent a lot of time researching teaching packages in different places, different states, different countries. Sika's teaching package is not attractive. Uh, we're here because, my family is here because of COVID, because it was an emergency decision for our kids. Uh, when I look at the sacrifices we are making to stay here, I'm currently happy to make them because my kids are getting a great education, they're getting amazing activities, they're getting amazing teaching in their school, and I'm very thankful for that. I've got four years until my younger son graduates, and with the way this package is and with the way things are going, we will absolutely leave in four years, as soon as my son, my younger son graduates. I can get a defined contribution anywhere. The, the pay that I'm getting here, when I factor in what I'm paying for everything else, it's, it's just not attractive. And I've got to save for retirement. I've got to save for my kid's college. I've got to pay a mortgage, and this isn't getting it done. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, the other thing I'd like to say just briefly is, I, I hear in the community a lot people talking about a teacher pay raise. I, I don't understand how it's a pay raise with 7% inflation. We're talking about what degree of a pay cut we're willing to take right now. That's what we've been talking about the whole year. And I know we're all, I know that inflation's around 7%. No one's talking about a 7% raise. We're certainly not talking about eight, nine, or 10. So we're not talking about a raise. We're talking about what level of cuts we're going to make. And that's discouraging when I see how this package does not stack up. When I first moved to Alaska, quite a while ago, we moved because the package was so amazing, because that, it, the amount we were making and everything that went into it overcame the fact that we were making that sacrifice, and that's not the case anymore, not for my family, anyway. Um, thank you for all you do. I really do appreciate it. Uh, I love living here, and I hope that I'm able to continue living here.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Okay. Thank you, everyone who spoke during Persons to Be Heard. We appreciate it. Moving on to item nine, school highlights. We are featuring Pacific High School and Sika High School. Welcome both. Sure, Mandy, if you'd like to go first, please.
All right. Are we on? Oh, thanks. All right, who, is it you that's, okay. All right. Okay, um, well, let's get started. I apologize for not being here not last month. Um, I was out sick that day, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, I just wanted to spend a little bit of time, um, I've talked about the garden as a highlight, I mean, I think it's my highlight every single day at Pacific High School. Part of it's personal interest, but part of it is just, uh, watching the kids really engage, um, in the activities and in the projects, and so, um, and because we have so many new board members and we have new staff in the district as well, I thought it would be fun, um, to just take you down, uh, take me down a little bit of memory lane, um, but also just show you, um, how far we've come, really, in the last 10 years. And so, so this first slide, um, in the upper right, um, this is how our gardening program started. Um, and this picture was taken in 2011. Um, we had one small box in the front of the school. I mean, you can even see the school behind the box, and that's before the school was remodeled. And so, um, you know, that's where we started, um, school and gardening program. Um, and then below it, you'll see, um, our garden expansion, um, behind Pacific High School and behind the Seek Building. And this is a picture of our spring gardening class, um, last year in 2021. Um, and one of the things that, you know, is fun for me to see is that box that's up in the right-hand corner is the same box that's in the left, the bottom left of the, the second picture. Um, and so, and there's a few pictures that hopefully I'll remember to point those out to you as we go, um, because these, I mean, for me, they're kind of living legacy pieces, um, for the gardening program. Um, so we'll just, you know, take a little time to, um, learn how the garden program really fits into what we do at Pacific High School. And so the garden is more than just, you know, a, a fun activity. It's fun to look at, it's tasty to eat in the back of the school. This really is, um, an integral part of our school curriculum. Um, we use the space in the garden as a real-world, project-oriented fieldwork for, fieldwork site for our students directly behind our school. Um, and we've used the garden, um, to either as the, the main subject area in, um, some of our classes, or we use it as an enrichment piece, um, to really, um, take what the students are doing in the classroom and apply that to, um, whatever that subject area may be in a hands-on experience. So we've used the garden for math classes, and science classes, um, English and elective classes. Um, they learn about plant propagation and, and soil building and crop maintenance, all of these things. Um, we've done small construction classes with students where they've built, um, different tools, I'll call them, that we use in the garden. Um, and then students grow, harvest, and eat the food, um, in our school lunch program and in our school breakfast program. So, um, it's not uncommon to hear around our school, "I love kale chips," because we eat kale chips a lot, um, but it's often, you know, not something that, uh, is common to hear, I don't think, out of a young person's mouth, the "I love kale" part, um, so that's fun. And this picture off to the left is just, um, this is one of our seedlings from this year. One of our students referred to it as "breaking the glass." One of our students referred to it as breaking the glass ceiling. That one seedling had popped through much higher than the other ones and so we wanted to capture that. So this is how we use the garden for students earning academic credit. We've used it as English credit. One of our fun classes that we've had in the past was called Reading and Weeding. That was a class that was focused on students developing reading comprehension skills through exploring the use of different reading strategies. And all of the reading materials that they were using were garden-based and they were learning about, basically the students became experts of a plant and they practiced using reading strategies so they could become experts about this plant and then teach it to others. Other things we've done, we've incorporated recycling and composting into English credit. We've had actually a number of community engagement classes focused on the garden, but this fall, we did a garden fundraising class to help raise funds for the expansion. Our math and science department has used, they've taught genetics and used plant genetics as part of that. We have a finance math class that we've had for the last two years. The finance math class, part of that class focuses on business plans and we use the garden and our plant sale. We'll have our second annual plant sale coming up. That's a part of that finance math class where students work together to calculate how much we've spent on supplies for all of our starts and then they work together to come up with the cost of what we want to sell those for in order to make some money to put back into the program. Another class being taught, actually this spring is a science class. It's called Plants, Agriculture, and Unnatural Selection. Students have been looking at both garden plants as well as plants just in the natural world. And then elective classes, we do garden construction. And that's where in that bottom right-hand picture, that table where you see our students, they're working on transplants, that's a potting table that was built as a student project probably about 2012 or 2013. So that was a final project or what we call a culmination project. It has a screen for the top so we can do our transplanting outside there. The dirt just falls through down to the bottom and we can capture it on that tarp and reuse it. And so, that planting table has been around almost 10 years as well. And then also Sitka Native Education Program uses that as well when they do seaweed harvests and when they dry out seaweed on that. So that's used by a partner program as well. These are some thoughts from students. I asked students who are in the gardening class, "I like the gardening class because..." And this is what they gave back to me. And I thought it was just a nice collection of, you know, it's fun and interesting. It brings people together. It's a nice social experience. I like to get outside and get my hands dirty. You know, students are taking these classes really for all different reasons and getting, you know, just a variety of things out of the classes. So those are some of our students who are currently in the class right now. And then the gardening program has been providing service to the community. Also since about, I guess maybe 2012, I think is fair to say that we've been providing service to the community. So the picture on the left is the building right on the corner of Beranoff and Sawmill Creek. It's directly across from Beranoff Elementary. And that picture, it was the Tribal Youth Center. And then that turned into the Boys and Girls Club. And then eventually that program lost funding and it became the Island Institute. I'm not really sure what's in there now, but in the back of that building is a very fertile garden plot that's overgrown with grass and weeds. Just FYI for anyone who has access to that building. So this is a group of, this is something we did for the Tribal Youth Center and the Boys and Girls Club. So again, the Sitka Native Education Program and students in the Boys and Girls Club could have garden activities behind their building. And then off to the right, this was actually 2021, not 2022, so that date is off. But this is our clinkeet potato planting. And we've been doing this project, I think, for gosh, five years now. And Pacific High School students go every spring and plant clinkeet potatoes on this plot at the US Forest Service Station. And then in the fall, we go back and harvest them. And those potatoes then are distributed out through STA Cultural Resources and distributed to tribal members and community members. And so, that's something we've been doing for a few years. So we've won some awards for our program. I haven't talked much about the food aspect of our program, but that has really been our focus for the last few years is to develop this farm-to-table program at Pacific High where we're growing as much food as we can to then put on the table for our students for breakfast and lunch. In 2013, our Fish to Schools Lunch, we entered our Fish to Schools Lunch in a Farm to School Challenge and we were selected as a winner for that. And then in 2019, we, along with Sitka Tribe of Alaska, were awarded USDA's Cultural Diversity Award. And this was in 2019. There's only two of these awards given out across the country. Unfortunately, this is also when COVID hit. And while they would have flown us and a few students to Washington DC to a fancy gala to accept this award, we did so on Zoom. We're happy for the award though and really proud of, you know, I mean, you know, this partnership that we have and it's nice to be recognized for that. So this is just a rough timeline to really, I mean, it's just been incrementally growing. So 2010 through 2014, we really just functioned with that one garden bed in front of our school. We offered one class a year that was normally within a content area. And because we didn't have a gardening space of our own at Pacific High, that's when we started providing service to elders just through, you know, kind of word of mouth within Sitka. You know, word got out that I had, you know, eight to 10 able-bodied kids that had a lot of energy and we were trying to teach them how to start garden plots and grow food. And so, we had, you know, a small handful of elders that we would go to their places and do some work for them in their garden. And then in 2015, we expanded to the space behind Pacific High School in the SEEK building. The maintenance department put up a small fence for us. We built eight beds with students, staff, and volunteers. And we expanded our course offerings for what the garden was included in. I think it was around 2018, again, this, you know, there were a lot of photos and files to go through and I kind of got lost on some crosswalks, I think, as I was looking at some of these pictures. But around 2018, the T-ball field behind Pacific High School was retired. We asked for permission to be able to use it if it wasn't going to be used for anything at that time. And so, we were given permission to expand into that space. And we had a partnership with STA for a community foods grant that provided the funding for a 24 by 48 greenhouse that we eventually bought over the course of that grant. 2019, we had the Mobi Greenhouse. Some of you may remember that. But Sustainable Southeast Partnership works with Sitka Conservation Society and there's a traveling greenhouse that schools can apply for around Southeast Alaska. And we were the recipients of it for that year. So, you know, a greenhouse that looks like a tiny home. It's basically on a trailer. Came off the ferry and we pulled it to Pacific High School and we gardened in that little greenhouse. It was our first taste of gardening in a greenhouse. We had that for a year. And in that same timeframe is when we used some of our grant funding to hire Fjord Landscape Design to really help, I mean, we had this bigger space and we needed someone to help us who had some expertise really help us design what that would look like and go through the process of the development of that. And this is also the timeframe when we used that community foods program funding to purchase the greenhouse. It is in parts and pieces, in boxes, still within that T-ball area. But this spring, we expect to be putting that up and growing food in it over the summer and into the fall. So in the last couple of years, I'm really grateful to Barth Hamburg with Fjord Landscape and Design because he really helped facilitate the permitting process with the city. Have I mentioned, I'm really grateful for him for that process because that can be arduous for someone who doesn't have that background and expertise, which I don't. And so, we have all of the building permits secured and we would like to begin excavation. There's water that pools up on that site and so we need to put some drainage in. And then we need to do some excavation and pour some concrete for the footings, the foundation for that greenhouse. So we're hoping that that will begin this spring as well. So, you know, this brings us to the Farm to Table program. I didn't want to go without mentioning this because again, this is where we're really going. We don't want to just grow food, but we want to show, have students be a part of the process of growing food, harvesting food, storing food, cooking food, eating food. And so, this year, well, this would have been last spring, we applied for a Farm to School grant and we were selected as an awardee. That grant provided the funding to hire staff for the garden, which is something that we were just trying to piecemeal it together with the staff that we had. Now, we've been able to hire Andrea Fraga. She's a professional gardener and a business owner in Sitka. And the goal of this grant is to increase the amount of freshly grown harvested fruits, berries, and vegetables used in our school lunch program. So Andrea is currently working full-time at the garden. She's co-teaching the spring gardening class and this position will be funded through December of 2022. And our intention that as a Farm to School awardee, that opens us up to the next round of funding, which is actually a bigger chunk of funding once we've demonstrated that, you know, we can use responsibly and appropriately this first round. And so, that's where we're going. And this schematic is, this is, we call this the long-term plan. And so, you can see the SEEK building there off to the right down in the bottom. And this is the current design for the, you can see the cars on, I guess I don't know the name of that street over where the buses pull up by Beranoff, but you can see the cars parked there. That's actually an aerial photograph. And then the garden plan is overlaid on top of that. And so, you can see the High Tunnel Greenhouse. That'll be the location of it. It's not quite as close to that fence as it looks in this schematic, but that's where the greenhouse will go. 24 by 48 industrial-sized greenhouse is going to allow us to grow a lot of food. We have fruit trees already that are just setting in temporary place, but we have apple trees and plum trees and some pear trees. And so, those will also be incorporated into the design. A number of outdoor planting beds. Having a fire ring and a place to gather was important to students. There's a smokehouse. It's actually a smokehouse for Native Education Program, but we do have a strong partnership with them. And so, you know, we'd just like to incorporate really this garden and food in with our subsistence program and then, you know, open up, you know, some access to our partners who, you know, are working with us back in this space, I guess I would say. And so, we would like to build, you know, a covered learning shelter. You can see that there. We do have a tool shed already built. It's in our parking lot right now, but we'd like to bring that back into the garden area. So this just kind of gives you an idea, you know, this is not set in stone, of course, but this gives you an idea of where we would like to take this. And we'd really like to be a destination spot for other schools to be able to come and see how we do this at our school as well as, you know, community organizations and, you know, other youth organizations that can help, you know, steward the garden in the summertime when we don't have kids in school. But lots of possibilities. I mean, we have options for students to work in the garden, either for credit or money. And so, I just, you know, it's exciting to think of the what could be as we continue to move towards this, you know, final, best drawing of the program. And then finally, just to leave you with some Audrey Hepburn. I love this quote, "To plant a garden is to believe in tomorrow." I think that is very consistent with education and teaching and working with young people as well. And so, these are some starts that students planted this year. Some of the pictures of students that were actually planting the seeds. These are the seeds.
Does anyone have any questions for Mandy?
We do have a larger version of this schematic. This actually lives at the district office. You know, I've, you know, had Leslie bring this back to the district office. So if anyone wants a closer look or wants to come look at this, this is something at the district office. This is a draft. There's a couple of things that have changed on it. We're going to get some larger printups of this, but this again is just for you to look at a little bit more closely if you...
You said, but best-case scenario, what's the timeframe for that being hand-opening of everything in place or is it going to be like piecemeal?
That all depends on funding.
Right, of course. Touche.
So, we, I like to call this our three- to five-year plan.
Okay.
Because, you know, the greenhouse is this year. We'll probably get the auxiliary planting beds in next year. These other items are more grant, I mean, if we want to put up a learning shelter, then that's going to be a grant for some funding or something. And so, I think just with our classes and with students, if we continue to, you know, get Farm to School funding so we can keep a school gardener on staff, the bed portion, the growing portion will take place first in the next year or two or three. And then we'd like to see some of these things happen in the next couple of years after that.
Great. And the greenhouse is here, right? It just needs to be...
The greenhouse is here.
Right, that's what, okay.
Yes. And the ravens have found it. And they know how to find shiny things within two layers of cardboard boxes, I've learned.
Yeah.
And so, we really want to get this up before we can't find the parts and pieces that go to it.
Yeah, seriously. Valuable shiny pieces.
Yeah.
For sure.
I have found shiny pieces with little plastic bags that I know are for the greenhouse. I'm just not, gather them up and collect them back.
And then, my other question, not to be too ambitious, but is there opportunities to maybe, you know, bring like Beranoff kids over to check out the garden?
Yep.
It's right there.
Yes. And that's something we, we've done that in the past. Again, you know, if I had probably an hour to keep talking to you. We, prior to COVID, I think we have like this pre-COVID, you know, world that we used to live in. Our, so our spring gardening students at this time of the year would, we would have brought over, you know, some kindergarten and first graders. Our students would have taught them what they learned about planting plants. We usually have them plant a pea because those, you know, sprout really quickly and they're fun to watch grow. It seems like most kids like eating fresh peas off the vine.
Oh, yeah.
And so, yeah, that's what we would do and I hope that we, you know, could get back to that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's a really exciting layout and we've talked a little bit about it.
Mm-hmm.
Not at board meetings, but I love that there's a fire pit.
Yeah.
I think that's such a great, like, touch.
Yeah.
You know, like you said, there should be a place they want to socialize and hang out.
Right, right. And as much learning as we can do outside, that's what our students want. That's what our staff wants. I think that's what we do here in Sitka anyway. And so, the more we can take the learning outside, for a lot of our students, the more relevant it's going to be.
Yeah.
So...
It's a great life skill to learn too. All right. Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mandy.
Okay.
Glad you're feeling better.
Yeah, thanks.
Glad you could come to this meeting, yeah. All right, Sitka High School.
Okay. So, good evening and I just want to echo Happy Teacher Appreciation Week for the teachers that are still here. We appreciate you very much. You've all been working really hard and we're close to the end. We're just going to talk about a few, really kind of just the last month at Sitka High. It's a long list. We've done the state testing with the ninth graders doing ELA in math and the 10th graders doing science. We hosted a softball tournament. We had National Honor Society induction ceremony. We had eighth grade transition...
We had eighth-grade transition and eighth-grade family night. We hosted a baseball tournament. We had prom. We hosted a track meet. We just had senior awards, and now, we're prepping for graduation. So, we're going to talk through several of these things and just kind of let you hear the latest happenings at Sitka High.
All right, up first, we're, uh, in full swing on spring sports. As Ms. Lundvik mentioned, we posted a softball tournament where we had five teams in town. Uh, and then the next weekend, we hosted a baseball tournament, and there was six teams in town. We got lucky and had great weather for actually all three of these events, softball, baseball, and track and field. Uh, most recently, in the same weekend, we had a track meet as well as softball games. We had about a hundred and fifty participants at the track and field meet this weekend, and that was awesome. A lot of the teams stayed in the school, so that added a, uh, fun dynamic for that day. Um, I think we, we all got to relearn how, uh, to stay in the school and good reminders for teams when they come visit us, um, but it's, it's just a lot of fun to have all that energy going on right now.
And so, on April thirteenth, we used an afternoon to bring over the eighth-grade students from Blatchley, and, uh, we started in the gym, had some introductions, and we were able to give them their Sitka High Class of Twenty Twenty-Six t-shirts. Um, they spent the afternoon touring our elective classes and learning what's available at Sitka High, and then later that evening, we hosted a family night, and as you can see in the picture, it was a overwhelming success. We had over a hundred and fifty visitors at our family night, um, the, the teachers introduced themselves in the commons, and then we had student council members that led tours throughout the building. Um, all of our teachers were there, it was like our open house, and we gave out tons of Sitka High spiritware that I am seeing all over town.
Right here on that, go back for Chris. You're one ahead of us, there you go. Uh, this Wednesday and last Wednesday during homeroom, we had a chance to host some pop-up concerts. Um, this was a really great time for our sixteen students that are going up to the state, uh, music festival this weekend, and it was a great chance for them to, uh, practice and perform ahead of that. Uh, I, I think it was a lot of fun because not only did the students get to hear some of their fellow classmates' talents and were shocked by the level of talent we have at Sitka High, um, I think it was a great chance for maybe some of the students to work out some of those nerves, as we heard from more than one that, uh, performing in, in front of a bunch of people was nothing but per, performing in front of their peers was, uh, kind of a, a new feeling for them, so, um, that, that was really fun to see. And then, uh, we, we are thankful for all that Mr. Kurnine has done to, to plans of that. We'll talk a little bit more about music, uh, coming up.
And so, as you saw with the pop-up concerts, assemblies are back. Um, this is another assembly that we had, um, featuring one of our students, Naomi Miller and her group. Um, they performed for the whole school, and then we also, um, we had the Bearinoff chapter of the National Honor Society, um, induction, um, that talks about not only student achievement, but also community engagement. Um, if you don't know about NHS, it's all about scholarship, service, leadership, and character, and that night, we inducted twenty-two new members into our chapter, so that was a nice night of candle lighting.
On April sixteenth, we got to host junior, senior prom. Oh, excuse me, it's the twenty-third, um, it all blends together. And we got to host right here at Centennial Hall. They were wonderful in, uh, allowing us to use their space, and they helped us get everything set up, they brought in the lift, and, uh, we can't thank them enough for, for what they did to help host this fun night. Um, as you can see from the pictures, it was a casino night. We had a couple card tables set up where, uh, Ms. Lundvik, among others, was one of our dealers. Uh, we, they were playing twenty-one, and they had some gold coins that they got a chance to, to play with, um, so that was a lot of fun. You know, we worked some math in there, which was really important to us.
(laughing)
So, and then, um, we had about a hundred and forty smiling faces attend this and one pair of ripped pants from Too Much Dancing.
The DJ was pretty phenomenal that night, I might add, yeah. And then, so, we are more than just about activities and the fun stuff, right? So, we are actually having class, and this is just a very nice class highlight, um, from Stacy Golden's field science class. Um, they took a trip to Cruzoff on the twenty-seventh of April, and it's a great example of our local partnerships at work in our classrooms. We had the U.S. Forest Service, the University of Alaska Southeast Sitka, the Sitka Sound Science Center, and of course, Al Marine that got us there and back. Um, they all joined forces to study the wetlands over on Cruzoff, um, ranging from proper fish handling techniques to using the latest technology for bird identification. Um, students spent the entire day hiking and studying, and they will ultimately create an end-of-the-year advocacy project from that trip.
Got to send approximately sixty students on the ferry over to Juneau for Music Fest. Uh, you can see there on the bottom kind of middle picture, kids were camping out in their hammocks on the way over and back, uh, and that was a lot of fun. That, that ferry can be, uh, quite the, uh, hormone factory with teenagers from all over the, uh, southeast heading to the same place, which can be a lot of fun. Uh, Mr. Kurnine and Ms. Richter from Sitka High were able to go and chaperone that, um, and we're really thankful that they were able to take some time and do that. Um, some fun highlights from that trip. Of the nine command performances, six were SHS students or groups, so we really performed very well over there, um, and it's no surprise, uh, given the, the, the kind of music tradition that we have here in Sitka and the hard work, again, that Mr. Kurnine has put into building that program and maintaining it through some, some challenging times. In addition to that, Art Fest was hosted in Klowak. We did not send any students over to that, but Mr. Lass, our art teacher, went over there and taught a course, um, and the three pieces that you can see here were student-submitted pieces, and those were the three that placed from Sitka High. So, we had a ceramics and, and two paintings, um, so kids did really well over there as well.
And so, Class of Twenty Twenty-Two, um, you can see the yard signs are starting to go up around town. We've got the Senior Spotlight showing Students Next Step that are being featured there throughout our building right now. And then, on Monday night, we had our senior awards. Um, that was a really, really nice tribute to the senior class and their accomplishments. We gave out, um, awards for service, Hala Tsin, Principal's Awards, Most Representative Students, National Honor Society Walla Champions, Ambassador Awards, and then we gave out scholarships. Um, I'm going to go through all of these because we really appreciate the time and effort and money that, um, the different organizations give to our post-secondary goals. Um, so Sitka Scholarship, Sitka Char, um, UAS, Holland America, Delta Western, Instra, The New Too Long or All, Sitka Tribe of Alaska, the Southeast Alaska Board of Realtors, the Sitka Education Association, the Sitka Shrine Club, the Sitka Education and Support Professionals, Sitka Sportsman, Spirit of Youth, Emblem Club, Ocean Wave Quilters, the Ken Osbakan Memorial, Alps Coast Guard, American Legion, the U.S. Senate Youth Program. We, we gave out our recognized over one point five million dollars' worth of money for post-secondary education on Monday, and that was, it's very impressive. We have a small senior class this year, and there's just a lot of great kids that are going to do some great things, so Sitka has a lot to be proud of. Um, we're looking forward to graduation that's coming up on May sixteenth, um, with the now-traditional parade that will follow, and what we've been doing with them, kind of busy.
Thank you for such a thorough update. Just, just one month of, (laugh) just a few weeks of act, a weeks of activities, so...
Yep.
Um, does anyone have any questions or comments or Sitka High team?
I just enjoyed seeing the, the posts of the plans, um, the senior highlights, and I love that we had prom. Uh, as someone who, um, previously worked at a high school, this time of year is just filled with so much energy and excitement and nerves. Um, it's just a special time of year, and, you know, to be able to get back to activities that, um, were previously canceled or changed, um, you know, it, it gives us hope and, um, you know, that's why we do what we do, so it's, it was a very busy month. I saw pictures of the tournaments and students just smiling and being happy and being engaged, so I'm, I'm, was really happy to see that. Thank you so much.
Yes.
I'd just like to say a formal thank you from the students and from us, we felt and loved and supported by you guys and the staff and this last month and a half, month or whatever, um, you know, exciting and, uh, worth it for us, so...
Anybody else? All right, thank you for your time and for, uh, presenting to us tonight. Onward to graduation. Right. We on to item ten, reports and presentations? Do we have any report under that? Nothing? Okay, so, item eleven, uh, board member reports. Anything board members would like to share with the group this evening? Anyone like to go first?
Uh, Mr. Holt, still here? I, uh, had a concert, um, I went to. Pretty enjoyable, I liked it a lot, um, really tell the kids to put a lot into it, and it's all...
Blossom, you want to go next? Please.
Well, I think last, the last few months, I, we hit a record of, uh, meetings and special meetings, and so, of, you know, concerning many different topics within the district, um, so I, I think, you know, it's pretty fair to say these last few months have been quite a blur. Um, I've, um, was happy to be a part of the tech committee and the policy committee, um, meetings that happened, um, Cindy Duncan, um, I again have to give her, um, credit for, um, having vision of, um, putting together a, um, a very well-thought-out plan, future plan for our students, um, and, um, ensuring that, um, we present students who, um, are, um, knowledgeable about, um, technology. Um, and then also, um, I myself, I've been to a few, um, of the Sayalaska Heritage, um, STEAM, um, meetings, um, unfortunately, um, due to scheduling conflicts, I was unable to attend the last Bunker event, um, but from what I hear, um, it is just a amazing program that, um, puts together cultural, uh, indigenous knowledge as well as science and, uh, math and, um, activities. It integrates really well, um, and I feel like I'm missing something. Bad notes, I can't find them, so I'm just going to call it as, uh, thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your report, Blossom. Paul, would you mind?
Um, (cough) not a whole lot to report since we've had so many meetings this month, um, yeah, um, just had the summers on its way, thanks.
Uh, Tom, did you have anything more to say? Report section.
I mean, most of the things that I could talk about have been talked to lovely principal, um... Had it to be done and are enjoying this last...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for being here. I know you have a lot going on, so, (laugh) thanks for, um, yeah, just thinking of all the events, just to echo, um, saw a wonderful music production with you in it, uh, which was actually a YPT thing, but so many of our district kids were involved in that, so, uh, that was wonderful to see. Um, and yeah, uh, all, I can verify prom was pretty fun. It's always hard to know, being the old guy DJ on stage, if things are landing, but it, it seemed like we had, we had some good moments, and it was, it was really great. And I also was able to participate, uh, with PHS's Clinkit Potato Planting this year, um, and that was just, it's just a great event that really checks all the right boxes. Uh, David Canash was there to do a little background and storytelling, um, and then meeting with Forest Service people, talking about, uh, proper planting techniques. It was just really, really great, so I really hope to be there for a harvest at some point, um, to see, to see the fruits of the labor. Um, and yeah, um, I just want to thank all of our teachers for, for being here, um, and for, and for speaking, and, um, we rest assure, we hear you. Um, I, it's, this is a really tough situation and, um, with, you know, there's only so much, I should say, from, from the board table, but, um, uh, we, we understand where you're coming from, and I know just saying that doesn't, doesn't fix things, um, but we really appreciate the involvement and, uh, the, the, even at this point where I know a lot of people are frustrated, still putting forward the, "We want to work together, we want to be part of the solution together," and we, I can't tell you how much we appreciate that, um, because it would be easy to slip into another, another direction, and so, um, we appreciate the, the good faith and, and, um, utilizing these channels to, to let us know how you're feeling, and, um, yeah, the work is not done, that's, that's for sure. So, so thank you for being here tonight and such a great, um, representation. It's wonderful to see so many teachers together, uh, the ones who are still here, so thank you. That's all I have to say tonight, for this part anyways. Um, so, moving along to administrative reports, uh, item twelve A. Mr. Hauser, if you could give us a budget update?
Yeah, thank you. I thought I'd take an opportunity, um, to, uh, talk a little bit about the budget process that we just went through, um, so I'll kind of go through and just give a quick highlight to, you know, a little bit more than what we've done in the past. You know, for the last few months, the school board and I have held listening sessions for staff and community members on the budget and also public work sessions. Uh, we heard over and over that maintaining low class sizes and programs are priorities for the staff and community. Um, SSD's budget reflects that feedback. Uh, the district submitted a balanced budget to the city, uh, at the end of April. Uh, by Alaska statute, we have to have a balanced budget to, uh, the city, um, by May first, so we got that in, which is great. Um, I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to review some of the highlights. Uh, first, these are the founding, um, funding sources, uh, where essentially the district gets its money. The largest portion, as you see, comes from the state at fifty-three percent, uh, nearly thirty-nine percent comes from the city, and less than one percent is federal. So, funding from the state has been flat funding since two thousand seventeen, and while this sounds benign, uh, districts receive the same amount of money year after year, but every year of flat funding represents a loss to the districts because it does not provide for inflation. Um, also, flat funding does not provide for the yearly increases to cost that districts have. Uh, for example, the cost of district employee health insurance, uh, for teachers and staff went up nine point five percent this year, um, alone. In order to keep, uh, low class sizes and programs going, again, like I said, which we heard back from our listening sessions from community and staff, um, the district has had to use fund balance, uh, which is our savings account, if you will, to make up for those increased yearly costs, uh, and inflation, uh, since we don't receive an increase to our state funding to cover them. This is a page from the state report card, uh, to the public. This is a page from the state report card, uh, to the public. Uh, we've looked at this site before when we've talked about data on attendance and graduation rates, and this is the financial data section, and you can see that is the second tab off to the left. Um, they do report out on financial data, and you can find this for all districts in the state, um, so you can compare them. This is the page for Sitka, and I'd just like to highlight two things. First, the pie chart in the bottom left, you'll see there how much, uh, is spent on instruction versus other costs. In Sitka, we spend eighty percent on instruction, which is higher than the state level. In other words, in Sitka, we spend more on, in our budget on instruction than the state does, um, like when you look across the state. Uh, there is only a thin slice of the pie not devoted to instruction in Sitka, and that includes other necessity, um, necessary expenses like maintenance and building operations. Uh, as one of our board members said at the last meeting, there is no longer any low hanging fruit or easy reductions to make since eighty percent of our money goes to instruction. The second thing I'd like to point out here is the unreserved fund balance, the district's saving account. Uh, it's listed here at about three point four million, but it's crossed out because here is that number, uh, in the current budget. Uh, this is from the budget we've submitted to the city for FY twenty-three. You'll see here that our fin, uh, fund balance for FY twenty-three is projected to be lower than it has been at any time since two thousand fourteen. Uh, it's projected at seven hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. We've had to spend our fund balance to keep class sizes low, programs going and avoiding reductions in teachers and staff because our funding remains flat and our costs for things like staff health insurance and also property insurance continue and keep going up. Uh, we want to keep and, uh, it's best practice to have four percent of our budget, um, in a fund balance or approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for emergency expenditures and for major maintenance, uh, something that's less known, uh, and we talked about it during our meetings, is that the district must have, uh, a quarter of a payroll in the bank for grant funded positions. Uh, the cost for these positions is rebur, reimbursed every quarter, uh, and that is a couple of our grants. Um, we do have signed agreements, MOAs, MOUs, uh, saying that we would pay, uh, you know, our staff that are working in those positions, um, and make sure that, uh, as we cover those costs, uh, the reimbursements come later. Like I said, we submit those reimbursements every quarter. So, we do need to make sure we have funds available for, um, for these items. And, uh, that's kind of where we currently are. There are two bills in the legislature that would potentially provide an increase, uh, to our state funding, House Bill two seventy-two and two seventy-three, as well as some possible one-time funding, uh, sources out there as well from the state. But those have not passed yet and we haven't seen that and, you know, we don't know if they will at this time, and at this point, we can't count on them in our budget unless they do pass. Uh, the district is also currently negotiating with two unions, um, and the possible costs associated with those negoti, negotiations are not reflected in the fund balance chart here. Um, so that's just a quick update with the budget that I just wanted to make sure I went over with everyone. Um, are there any questions about that? All right, moving on to enrollment update. Excuse me. You will see our enrollment has gone up since last night. We have one thousand one hundred and twenty-six students. Last time I reported, we had one thousand one hundred and twenty-five students. And so, um, that's a good thing. Maintaining our enrollment is a, is a positive thing, and you'll see that, um, that number is actually, uh, still, uh, higher than what we are projecting for enrollment for next school year. So, we are seeing, uh, you know, we're, we're projecting stability in our enrollment numbers and, um, you know, and a positive would be to increase our enrollment numbers. And so, that's of course the hope as we, uh, go into next year, but, uh, we are seeing, uh, consistent numbers here and maintaining those consistent numbers for the whole year. So, that's promising as we look to the future, uh, for our enrollment numbers. And now I'd like to move on to my superintendent's report. First off, like we've all said, yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day, and this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And we want to pay tribute to educators who empower our students across the country with the knowledge and skills that they need to reach their potential and achieve their dreams. So, I just wanted to thank all the teachers out there. Thank you very much for making a difference and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Now, we're going to take, uh, some looks at some school highlights and things that have been going around in the schools. I attended a special lesson at Baranoff where the students were learning, uh, about local seabirds. This was put on by the SIKTASound Science Center, and, uh, they entered the classroom, as you can tell, with their binoculars on, and saw some of the birds on Saint Lazaria Island. Um, then they had a lesson about habitat, eggs and food sources. Uh, and they even had an egg hunt in class, and the students really had a great time, and I have to say, I actually had a fantastic time myself. It was a lot of fun hanging out and doing science with, uh, some kindergartners. Also, at Baranoff, students had a field trip to the library as well as, uh, the ice cream social that they had, and so we had a lot of fun, uh, there. Uh, drum, uh, the, uh, uh, Baranoff, um, uh, students were drumming, and I got a chance to participate in the drum. I don't think I got any pictures of that, so I might have to talk to Mr. Joe to see, might be able to give me a couple of pictures of that, uh, trying my hat at, uh, drumming, so. Uh, but it was a really good time and, uh, that social was a nice day. It was great to see everybody out there. I also had a chance to visit Ms. Eddie's kindergarten class on Tuesday, and I got a chance to read the book with no pictures to the class. If you have not read, it is an awesome book. It was so much fun. And so, I got a chance to, to, uh, get a little video, so I thought I'd share a little video of me, uh, you know, kind of going through some of it. Now, I have to say, I was just, it was, it, that made my day, so. Uh-oh. Now, is this the reverse? All right, well, you, you'd love to hear me read that? Well, I tell you what, uh, maybe, maybe we'll, oh, whoa. No, it does not seem to be working. Well, we don't need to worry about me reading. I can, I can share that with everyone if, uh, in the future. I haven't, I've got another video too. I was just trying to be multimedia, so. Um, it was a lot of fun. Had a good time. I got a chance to, um, say some really, uh, fun and interesting nonsense words, and the kids and I really had a good time. So, I just wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Eddie again for giving me the opportunity to come in. Um, please keep the invitations coming. I love going into the classrooms, so anyone, anytime, please let me know if you'd like me to come in and, um, you know, read your class and just kind of hang out, and, uh, those are just great times. Students and staff at, um, Kikushahin are always up for a good time. Uh, they have a lot of fun things planned, uh, at Keats. Obviously, uh, May the Fourth be with you being a, uh, key fun time for them, so I thought that was a great picture. May is field trip month. After having two years with no field trips, students and staff are very excited to provide these opportunities that students will remember for years to come. Um, Stargaven Rec, uh, middle school pool for cold water safety, wise water treatment plant, all these different things that were taking place, uh, this month for field trips. And it was a very busy month for field trips. Other happenings at Keats, we had, uh, second grade concert was a huge success, and students are looking forward to beach day, fourth grade music movers, fifth grade squid dissection and forestry day. Um, Kikushahin will also be hosting a block party for the last day of school to celebrate the amazing school year that they've had. So, of course, you know, these are just some of the fun things that are continuing to happen and have happened at Kikushahin. Moving on to Blatchley Middle School, they recently had a spring dance, and yes, if you haven't seen Miss Hori Dance, uh, it was spectacular to see it. I got a chance to go there and have fun and watch the students, um, and it was just a lot of fun to see the students. Um, I don't think we'll get the other video to play, but I did have a chance to go there. And I think the important thing to remember here is that for many of these students, this was their first dance ever. And, um, I have to say, just watching them, just have fun seeing dance and just run around, I mean, Blatchley did a fantastic job. There were so many fun activities. It was decorated just beautifully. Um, it just was really good to see the students have that opportunity. And like I said, the eighth graders had only had one dance their sixth grade year, and this was the first dance for the sixth and seventh graders, so it was a lot of fun. And probably no, it's not working either, is it? No. All right. I'll share the videos with you guys so you can see them. Um, Sitka High School, as we, uh, uh, had already described, you know, Principal Lundvik already talked about, um, had celebrated their prom, uh, so here's the prom royalty. Wanted to make sure we recognize prom royalty. And some more pictures of prom were there. Yes, there were, uh, I believe there were a couple of pants blowouts, uh, at prom this go around, but one, from what I understand, was a spectacular one, and I'm not going to mention any names, uh, but, uh, might be apparent in this, uh, in this, uh, meeting right now, so. We'll, we'll say that, uh, you know, I'll, I'll share that with you guys later, so. But it was a lot of fun. I heard a lot of great things. Uh, I was actually very disappointed. I, uh, unfortunately had come down with COVID during that time, and I was, uh, still very positive, and so I was not able to attend prom. I was very sad about that. Um, but I have to thank, uh, Principal Lundvik. She was very generous to share me some videos and some pictures of the time, uh, you know, throughout the evening, so I appreciated that. Uh, SHS also recently had its senior award night, and I just wanted to highlight, um, the students, uh, who are recognized for the two long, are all scholarship recipients, and so wanted to just take that moment to recognize them as well as just thank Sitka High School for all the work that they've done, um, you know, with the senior awards nights. One point five million dollars, um, is really spectacular, uh, for, uh, the sixty-seven graduates from Sitka High School. So, um, just congratulations to all the students and the graduates there. Uh, our high school graduations, uh, for Pacific High School and Sitka High School are coming up very quickly. And I'd just like to remind everyone of our new graduation regalia policy this year, which states a student may wear traditional tribal regalia or recognized objects of cultural significance along with or attached to a gown, stole and cap at graduation ceremonies or related school events. A cap is not required if it is incompatible with a regalia or significant object. And I just wanted to take, again, another opportunity to thank our graduation policy committee and the, um, group that really worked on the regalia policy for all the hard work to make this happen. So, thank you so much. I also want to take a moment to thank TJ in our main office for all of the work that he did, um, updating our website homepage. Uh, the homepage has been pretty static, short of updating everyone on COVID numbers for the last almost year and a half to two years. And we've recently updated that and are celebrating and recognizing our students and having pictures and getting back to celebrating some of the great things that are happening around our school. And so, um, we're really excited to kind of have a, a new homepage. Um, we still have the COVID information under the COVID nineteen tab, uh, but we really wanted to focus on our new, um, homepage. Uh, we are also planning a bigger upgrade over the summer, uh, and when we make our transition, we're in the process of updating our website right now. Hope to have that, um, transition take place towards the end of June into July to have and to showcase our new website. So, we're really excited about that. Um, and that's going to be a pretty significant big change, uh, to our website that hopefully will be a lot more accessible and, uh, ease of use for our, um, families and for our staff to find information, access information, and the goal is under three clicks to find the information that you need, so. And then finally, I just wanted to remind everyone, May fourteenth at two o'clock is the Pacific High School graduation, and May sixteenth at seven o'clock is Sitka High School graduation. And of course, May twenty-fourth is hard to believe is the last day of school. So, um, those are my highlights. Uh, if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain that, but that's, that's my superintendent's report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hauser. Um, yeah, and graduation and everything coming up quickly. All right, uh, moving on to item thirteen, new business. Uh, first item A is a discussion of renaming Baranoff Elementary School. Uh, there's no motion drafted for this discussion, but we need to revisit, uh, where we're at with that process. Um, I don't think I need to recap for any of us, uh, where we are, but, uh, it is something we've committed to doing. So, uh, tonight I was hopeful that we could, um, at least just kind of talk about, uh, pathways forward. I don't think there's any, uh, pressure or urgency to come up with a motion tonight or to have a solid plan in place, but, um, we do have, uh, we just, we need to talk about it and keep it fresh in our minds. Um, I think for discussions, I can open it up to the public first. Um, I think we, hopefully we have a few people here tonight to speak on that process. So, uh, this is regarding renaming Baranoff Elementary School. So, if we have anyone from the public tonight who'd like to, uh, speak on this, we'll keep with our three minutes, approximate three minute time limit. Like to come on up and state your name for the record and, uh, give us your thoughts. We'd appreciate it. Uh, push the button again. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Colleen Duncan. Uh, I'm just here to hopefully give, um, my input so that informing your committee that you are looking at a di, a diverse number of, uh, community members. And, um, I'm going to read some of the notes from Melanie's letter that she sent to the board. The proposed name should be appropriate to the age of the students at the facility being named or renamed. The name should stand the test of time. The name, the name and sites or facilities, special consideration may be given to those names that have some special meaning to the students and community. The name will not be named after individuals. The name will take into consideration the Alaska standards for culturally responsive schools. Portions of school facilities such as libraries, gymnasiums and athletic fields shall be named according to their educational purpose. However, if another name is used, it has no implied permanence and may later be removed by the board. Naming of a new school. Naming committee. The board president will direct the formation of a di, diverse naming committee. The committee may include seven to nine seats and participants that could be invited to join. School board president or appointee, the school principal, Sitka Tribe of Alaska representative, Sitka School District Cultural Director, a school parent representative, Filipino or another minority community representative, Sitka Tribal Elder, a community at large, and Sitka Tribal Citizen at large.
Yeah, go ahead. You've got about a minute left.
The committee process shall in, include a communication plan which explains the process and timelines for public participation. Opportunities for students to be involved, public consultation, clarification of the strategies to be used by the committee for de, decisions making and adherence to those strategies. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your, for your comments tonight. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the renaming of Baranoff Elementary School? Okay. So, turning it back to the board table. Um, yeah, I know we've all, uh, had a lot of, a lot of things coming at us the last month especially, um, and then this, this issue itself. Um, but we've had a couple of months to really try to digest this in our minds, and, um, I would love to hear from any board members, uh, dialogue discussion of how we, how you'd like to see this move forward. Um, any thoughts or concerns or, uh, criteria that we should consider in this process? So, first. For Gabler?
I'll go first. So, um, I think first thing I'd like to talk about is I'd like to take a step back and recognize the STA for the work that they did put into it. Higher, higher renaming of the school. What we did as board, we, we asked for a recommendation and the recommendation it, their, uh, student, or tribal government and came. So, I think, you know, with all the controversy that was going on with that, counting the rename, that I think that acknowledgement somehow got, it got lost a little bit. And I just, a little bit of time, just, uh, bringing that back and thanking them for the work that they have put into. Um, I've, I've stated before, I'm, I'm not native. It of living in a native community, so I, I need that native perspective when it comes. Who better to ask, get a perspective than the. And in, in regards to the current renaming, I would respectfully ask the STA to take on the task. They, they did a good job the first time. Say respectfully because we already asked them to do it once. Say respectfully because we already asked them to do it once and. Um, with the only stipulation in, in my opinion is not to new, not to use the two names prior. Use this culture educator and use the, um. You know, in order to move forward properly, we have to leave the past in the path of the future. Using those two older names form, I think, which is. And I'm, I, I am optimistic. You know, this second go around, it's a great opportunity to finally make this something that could be celebrated because prior to that, it was not something to be celebrated. Out over the entire thing. I, my recommendation would be to ask the tribe.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions for that, but I guess we'll run it if anybody else wants to. First, and then we can discuss it a little bit.
Well, I guess the only couple of things I'd throw in, I, I like Dr. Duncan's suggestion of having students involved. That's always a great idea. Something I'm always in favor of. Um, I think one thing, you know, this, going all the way back, I mean, a lot of the original movement from this came from the Sitka Health Summit, and they had originally, um, you know, volunteered to put that committee together and, you know, maybe we should go back and, I mean, I have no issue with going back and asking the tribe if they're interested in doing it again. Um, but maybe we should ask the Health Summit to do the, in partnership. Um, they might be a good community liaison. So I don't feel strongly about that. I just thought, oops, sorry. I just thought it might be a suggestion going back to the original history. Oh, and I also, I think that, I mean, it might be a good idea to set it up for the committee to start in the fall. Is, I mean, I, I don't think there's any rush or, you know, uh, you know, none of the, the time that we spent on it is kind of starting over. So it's, um, I would suggest a nice clean beginning to end rather than trying to have it disjointed, try to put something together this spring and pick it back up again in the fall. That's just my opinion. Thanks.
I think, um, you know, with these past few months and how our schedules have been, um, with, um, you know, budgets and negotiations along with, um, all the other activities within the district. Um, it was a much needed time to reflect and, um, think about how this process has come about. Um, I do have to agree with Mr. Gabler tonight that, um, while this subject has been, uh, quite unexpectedly become controversial within our community and unfortunately, um, presented, um, and created division within our community. Um, I think it is with, you know, within our duty to acknowledge the Sitka Tribe of Alaska and their time spent, um, on the renaming. Um, when we began, when we put this on the agenda and we, uh, we decided to rename Bearinoff Elementary, um, we, we intentionally and without any malice, wanted to make it a specific cultural, local cultural indigenous, um, educator for many different reasons because, um, we are on Klinkaani. The Sitka Native Education Program has, um, over the years, time and time again, um, provided cultural insight, cultural classes, much needed cultural and traditional, um, ties and lessons that, uh, many of our students, uh, indigenous and non-indigenous, uh, learned and, just the source of knowledge, um, that, uh, the program has provided has been immense. So, when we asked the Sitka, the Sitka Tribe of Alaska for the specific, um, local cultural educator, um, we did bring it back to the table and we did ask ourselves, was this too specific? At that time, um, I do want to reiterate that, um, nobody, um, objected at that time. So we did give it over to the Sitka Tribe of Alaska. They spent fourteen months, um, with their cultural committee. Um, at no time did they ever report that it was, um, culturally insensitive to name a building after a full person. With that being said, with the name that was presented to us and the, um, meetings that followed thereafter, uh, we did get public feedback. Um, and I do have to say that, um, the name that they, they chose was very well thought out in, in my opinion. Um, to, to say that Charlie Joseph Senior was not, um, a person that a school, um. To say that he, he wasn't worthy to have a school named after him would be the wrong thing to say. Um, and I feel that, uh, the discussions that followed, I tried to weigh and measure the, the testimony that we heard. And the testimony that we heard was, it was not traditional to name a building after one person. Well, you know, we could go down all these different sideline roads of, of, um, of discussion and I'm, I've tried to stay very objective, um, on this subject because the testimony that I heard was very heartfelt. I do, uh, recognize, uh, the people who, um, spoke up against and for the names. All had, um, good intentions and very meaningful ties. Um, and this is why people speak at meetings to have their voice heard. Um, so in light of the last few meetings that we've had, um, concerning this matter, I would like to add that, um, while STA did put in all this time, um, into the, um, suggestion that they gave us, I also want to recognize, uh, the family of Charlie Joseph Senior. Uh, they have been more than gracious during this time. Um, and, uh, while we started, um, with, um, in one place, we ended up in another. And this is part of, um, growing a community and growing perspective. And, um, you know, it's really important to be cultural, culturally sensitive and, um, listen to those that, um, have spoken up about this issue. Um, so moving forward, um, again, um, it's just been, uh, personally unfortunate to have experienced such a, uh, experience instead of, um, what this could have been was a positive and growing experience, I feel. Um, it turned out to be quite painful in many different ways. Um, but with pain you also, you, you also grow. So being objective, um, moving forward, as I stated, and as Mr. Gabler has stated, um, I'm open to, to hearing, um, the ideas. I feel that, um, a process was followed, a process was completed. It was given over to, um, a very well respected and, um, very, um, trusted entity that we've, um, grown ties with over the years. And they followed their own process and, uh, they came up with a suggestion. And so I'll. While that happened, you know, again, I just want to echo what Mr. Gabler has stated. Work had gone into this, uh, renaming, um, and I don't want to lose sight of how much work has gone into it. Um, in no means if whatever, moving forward, um, and going with a different suggested name, by no means I want this on record. Does that mean that we think of, uh, STA, um, and their hard work and their dedication to our community and our children, um, is any less. Cultural Committee, um, did, you know, put a lot of work into their suggestion. And with that being said, with the, with the testimonies thereafter, I'm willing to move forward and, um, come together as a community to, um, come up with a name that will not promote division within our community. So with that being said, again, we, we can come together and, and, and get this done. I, you know, I think we all agree that the name needs to be changed. Um, and let's that, let that be the, the foundation of coming together. As to forming a committee or committing to a, um, definite plan tonight, I feel that, um, it's necessary to, um, spend some time and, um, look at the options that we have in front of us so that, um, we can come up with the name, um, in a timely manner, in a meaningful manner, and, um, in a manner that, um, would, um, not create division. Um, I do have to agree with, um, Mr. Hames and, um, Mr. Vu. There is no rush in the renaming, um, but I do appreciate that it is on the agenda tonight because we do have to, um, work, um, continue to work on this subject. Um, how we get it done, you know, I'm open to, to, um, ideas. And like I stated, um, a part of me disagrees with starting all over again because it kind of, in doing so, it kind of, um, takes away from the process that we have and also that STA has. So I want that to be on record as well. As long as we can have the name changed, um, that, that was the goal that we set out to be, to get done. And I feel that we can do that. How we get it done, um, have to put our heads together. We've come through budget meetings and negotiations. We're going through, we've made it through COVID, you know, we could see this done. I definitely do not want to, um, have all the experiences that we have, um, put. Um, I don't in any way want that to be, um, breaks to this movement. It has to get done. It is important. Um, that's what I have to say. I want to be objective and, um, open.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for those, for your thoughts, everybody. Um, we've, I mean, I've talked to all of you individually at different times and I, I know that you all have spoken individually, uh, at times about this issue. And so I know there's been a lot of thoughts and a lot of, uh, uh, feeling the weight of, of this process where what started out as seeming this was a perfect solution, um, came back to us and we realized that there was, there were other thoughts and feelings about it. I, I agree, um, that the process, um, because this, like you said, like everybody has said, this was the process we asked and, and STA took our ask and they worked really hard on it and came back with that. In the same process, the board tabled and listened and then ultimately voted no on the process. So, um, I think the way I'm choosing to look at this is that our original approach, you know, we have to own that. We have to own that this was what seemed like the right thing to do. It was made by a great motion after a really inspirational, uh, session of hearing from community members in this very room. Uh, we moved pretty fast on it. It just seemed like, I mean, I was, I was absolutely caught up in the, in the inspiration of it. Now, that's not a false inspir- inspiration. It's, it's not what I'm saying. It just, it was, it seemed like a really quick and easy way to go. I shouldn't use the word easy. It seemed like an obvious way to go. Um, and I think in working across cultures and in working with the tribe, uh, it's something that we say that we value. It's something that we, um, that we, that we prioritize. But in going through an, an issue where there are lots of differing valid opinions, um, I think I, I, I see this as a time of growth and as a time of us recognizing where we maybe, I don't know, I, in my mind, I, I put this more on us and, and, because STA has done nothing wrong here. And, um, they, they, they did a great job, uh, working with the criteria that we asked. So my biggest concern obviously was just I want to make sure that STA realizes our, our dedication and commitment to continuing to work with them, um, and honoring their sovereignty and their, uh, generations and millennia of experience, uh, on these lands and the perspective that they bring. I, I like what you said, Paul, about, I think, um, again, not to put it off, but I, I do think that finishing out this year and revisiting this in, in the fall, that's what I would be, I would be really supportive of. I guess I'm thinking about from a procedural standpoint, we're no longer at a motion. We could discuss this every meeting. I think if we wanted to, we can put it on the agenda, correct? Um, or we can just, we can sit and think on it for a little while. And then it is up to the board to make sure that we put this back on the agenda in the fall, which I think all of us would be. which I think all of us would be willing to commit to that. Um, this isn't something that we want to see fizzle. Although I kind of feel like what you were getting at, Blossom, and I think for all of us, um, you know, the, the difficulty of the process, the, you know, it, it sucked some, a lot of the wind out of my sails on this, just to be honest. It, it did, you know, I'm just like, man, well, maybe this is, this is too difficult. And that's the time when you have to step back and regroup and, and face yourself into it again. So, I, I know we're all there with that. Um, I don't feel it's been ruined. Um, and I absolutely want to acknowledge too, I, I love that you have appreciated and honored the family in your comments, um, uh, in speaking like such a, again, everything I've learned about Charlie Joseph. He, he would never want to be referred to as a legendary figure or somebody who, who deserves to be, uh, you know, his name should be on a school building. But, but the philosophy that he brought, um, in his life, uh, never mind the practicalities of, of the knowledge and information that he, that he helped to save along with working with other people, um, is, is absolutely inspirational. And I love his philosophy of the SNEP program, the education, cultural learnings, uh, is open to everyone. This is something that all people can benefit from. And, um, you know, what, what, what else would, if we don't want our school modeled after that philosophy, I, I can't think of a better one. But I think we should spend some time thinking about some more specific criteria, not be too specific. I really like the idea of whatever committee takes this on, let's, let's say, can you give us please a minimum of two suggestions, a maximum of maybe four? Um, again, these are just ideas for you all to think about. Um, notes, Todd, you talked about, and it's been said by other people too, let's, let's take off the, the previous names. Let's just start, let's start fresh, um, and I, I like that idea as well. Um, Paul, I love your idea of getting with the Sitka Health Summit. I think that could be a really great group just to have an introduction conversation with. Um, I would want to do a little more, uh, whether it's informal, uh, conversations with tribal members and the, the council, um, to see what they're willing to take on again. Um, I don't want to assume that, that they would just start over. Um, I, I do think a lot of the feedback we heard, and again, this was us that set this up, not the tribe, a lot of the feedback that we heard was they wished that more people had been involved, more perspectives had been present at, at these discussion meetings. And so, I would love to see that too. My fears are getting too many cooks in the kitchen and, um, having such a stalled process that, uh, just faces its own tail. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we kind of find that balance of, of including as many people as we can, um, because we are, you know, you know, and on counter to that, we need as many cooks in the kitchen as we can on this because if we want this school to truly represent the community, um, I think all those perspectives are great. Um, I would thank Mrs. Duncan and, um, we all did get that email from, from Mrs. Board. Uh, I think that's a great place to kind of start when thinking about what this committee would look like. Um, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Other communities and, uh, boards have been through this process of what we want to, uh, of, of changing the name of a school. And so, I think we can definitely learn from, uh, the processes that have happened in the past. So, um, yeah, I don't think anyone, I, I really, I, I took some great notes and I think you all have, uh, have, have a, this is a great perspective to start with. But, um, I guess we can commit to bringing this back on the agenda. Um, I'm trying to think, I've been through this twice now, but our August meetings, September meetings, um, we need to find the best place of where, where we can put that. Um, perhaps maybe getting those first, uh, start of the year meetings out of the way. And then, uh, this might be a great topic to bring back for, uh, September or October. Um, would, I'd love to see it before the, before the end of the year personally. So, um, you have my commitment to, uh, seeing that through. Anyone else have any comments from the, from the board? Or even discussions are a little informal. Anyone else in the audience want to say anything to speak on this? Sure, Ms. Duncan, another...
Do you have a policy on naming?
Um...
I know you're not, I'm not supposed to ask a question, but that's my, that's, that's where I'm going to start.
Yeah.
Because it would seem like, as a school board, you would have a policy in place before you even brought this subject up.
Yeah.
And as far as beating yourself up over the tribe, you have not embarrassed us. You have been supportive of the whole community. Let me remind you, Sitka Tribe had one meeting, one. Was it fourteen months that you guys gave them that charge?
That was how long it was bef- yeah.
It was that long. And they had one meeting and forwarded a name to you. They, please don't blame yourself for this.
Yeah.
And at that one meeting and at the, I, I was invited to the one cultural meeting that they had. There were seven people that voted out of two hundred elders.
Okay.
So, let's be realistic about this whole process. You did nothing wrong. And I would like to see a policy in place. If you don't have that, maybe that's where you should start.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No, I think that's, uh, thank you for those comments. Um, and it's funny, that, that's a, that is a good perspective to take though because when we do reach an issue that we're stumped on a little bit, we go to ASAA and that's the very first thing they say is what does your policy say on this issue? So, um, that's another thing to add to our list of, of looking into and we'll, we'll check that out. So, um, but yeah, just thank you, everyone, for your patience and for, uh, the continued effort to, to keep this issue moving forward. Um, we have item B, PHS Garden Greenhouse RFP. Uh, let's move forward with item thirteen B. Uh, can I have a motion, please? I can make it. I move that a contract in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars be awarded to KNE Alaska Incorporated to complete the Pacific High School Garden Greenhouse Foundation and Site Work, contingent upon no appeals being filed on or before May fifth, twenty twenty-two. Second. It has been moved and seconded that a contract in the amount of sixty-six thousand, sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars be awarded to KNE Alaska Incorporated to complete the PHS Garden Greenhouse Foundation and Site Work, contingent upon no appeals being filed on or before May fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do you have any public comment to this motion? Welcome back, Mandy.
Hello, Mandy Summer, Principal of Pacific High. Um, okay, so maybe the garden wasn't just about highlight presentations tonight. Um, uh, I'm not really sure what else to say. Um, I wanted to, you know, give, um, give you an idea of what the timeline, um, we've gone through over the last ten years. Um, you know, really so you could see that this, you know, this isn't really a fly-by-night project for us. It's something that we have continued to, uh, build upon over the last ten years. Um, we, we've had a number of grant partnerships that have helped support this program. And, um, you know, we continue to have students who are interested in participating in the classes and get excited about growing food. Um, we have a really unique opportunity, I think, in terms of the Farm-to-table program that we're trying to develop. Um, it's pretty unique here in Southeast Alaska. Um, there's a number of schools with gardens, but, you know, oftentimes, um, you know, it really does depend on a person. Um, and this is, this is some, we, we haven't wanted the Pacific High Garden to be that. Well, this is something that we're integrating into the fabric of our school, um, and making, um, a large part of our curriculum. And so, um, we just need to get that greenhouse up. Um, we've, we've, we've got it. We've got the curriculum. We've got the greenhouse. Um, and so, this is, uh, I guess, kind of that next step, uh, towards us, uh, starting to, to make that, um, site plan really a reality. Um, and this is the expensive stuff. Um, you know, I, 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 I've asked our, those that we, um, get grants from, if we can use grant funding for any portion of this project. And it's just because of the nature of the work, being drainage work and excavation, it's just not something that falls into the categories of our grant funding nor, um, is the grant funding that we get, um, adequate, um, to cover the costs of it. And so, um, you know, we, um, you know, just very, uh, respectfully ask for, um, the support of the school board in, um, helping us get this greenhouse put up this year. Um, this is the last, uh, chunk of funding I think we need to make that happen. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Um, just appreciate your continued support.
You have, um, some questions for you. Um, when I read this, um, you know, in, in following you through this journey of the, the gardening and the greenhouse, um, project, you know, it's been very inspirational. But when it comes down to, um, money and since I did read that the funding, um, is going to come from the food service account and major maintenance funding, um, is reimbursed by the city and borough of Sitka. Um, could I get a number as to, um, what type of, how that would affect our, our fund, our food service account, major maintenance? Um, and if we're taking the sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars out of that, um, you know, I'm just thinking ahead of, we may have a great greenhouse, but if there's an emergency, I just want to make sure that, um, we'd be able to cover any type of maintenance that would come up.
And I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, go.
No, I was just going to say, I, I, uh, will invite our business manager, and it's lovely Young up to speak to that. Um, a couple of things though, we do have a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the city that covers major maintenance. Um, we do have a couple of, uh, projects that we're working on, uh, and have planned for the summer, but that hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's earmarked for major maintenance. Um, that is every year we get that, uh, and so, um, we are hoping that we'll have some left over from that major maintenance by, uh, June to be able to utilize for this. But I will go ahead and let, um, Ms. Young speak to some of the specifics also about the, um, food service.
Hi, Leslie Young. Uh, yes, the food service program currently has a fund balance that exceeds what the state allows us to have. And so, we've been using that to purchase freezers and upgrade some facilities already to enhance our program. And, and the food service budget can only be used for food service programming. And after requesting from the state, they have granted, uh, use of that funding for the Farm-to-table program. Lunch program, uh, in combination with the, um, the city funds, the, the purpose will be to decide how much of the city funds are not utilized for other major maintenance projects through the school district as the, that funding goes away if we don't use it. So, we're always trying to maximize everything that, you know, will enhance funding. And then if, again, if that's the case, it's going to be a split between those fundings. Um, again, it won't impact any, uh, lunch program, you know, that's all reimbursement. And I will be coming back with a lunch pricing increase, but the, as the program has to operate on a neutral, you know, prices, lunch prices will have to go up to help that, what we charge for the meals because obviously in our, uh, once you saw you approved the lunch RFP, which meals that we pay for our vendor has gone up. So, we have to find that balance and we'll be back and presenting that. And we, we have to find that balance with the lunch program and we have to use the fund to balance where it should be with that.
Thank you for that.
Just one piece I, you know, might be, uh, worth adding is, um, you know, as recipients of the Farm-to-School Grant, there, you know, are a number of webinars to participate in, um, and, uh, you know, I guess, learning events for those of us who, um, are the grant, the, the awardees. Um, and I, I was surprised to learn, like, during, um, these training sessions that there, there are farm-to-school programs in, in schools, really across the country, uh, where this is not uncommon, where food service money, because the, I mean, these schools are using the food in their food service program. Um, and so, that was kind of like a, oh, this is amazing, uh, to learn this. Um, and so, um, I guess I just throw that out there that it isn't like hugely uncommon in the farm-to-school wor- world or the school garden world, um, especially if the food is being used in the school lunch program, you know, which ours is. We don't, we don't have a lot to use in the school lunch program yet, but we're using the kale that we have and we're using the potatoes that we have. And so, um, it's not, it's not such an odd thing, um, in... And by providing our own food, it is less food that we have to purchase. Um, enhancement of saving money in some ways because we're...
Great. Um, any other questions from any other members? Okay, uh, that was a great question, Blossom, and thank you, uh, both of you ladies for being here to, uh, to speak to this. Uh, the motion on the table. All right, uh, let's, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion on the table is to contract in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred dollars be awarded to KNE Alaska Incorporated to complete the PHS Garden Greenhouse Foundation and Site Work, contingent upon no appeals being filed on or before May fifth, fifth, twenty twenty-two. Todd, can you lead us through that roll call vote, please?
Excuse me, Blossom Teal Olson.
Yes.
Todd Gebler. Paula Ryu.
Yes.
Itona Glue. Your vote is an advisory vote.
Yes.
Andrew Haines.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Um, great. And as I mentioned earlier, the Policy Committee has been busy and we have a whole stack of, uh, board policies to look at coming up. I'd like to move to take a five-minute recess real quick. We've been at this for two hours. I move to recess for five minutes. Second, I know, well, I, Don told me last time we need to vote on it, actually, so.
Sure, second.
You're going to second me? Okay.
Yeah, second, I got to go.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to recess for five minutes. Um, anyone opposed? Great. Uh, it's eight-ten. We'll be back at eight-fifteen. Thank you. To item thirteen C, which is rescheduling the June school board meeting.
I move to reschedule the June school board meeting to June one, twenty twenty-two.
It has been moved and seconded to reschedule the June school board meeting to June first, twenty twenty-two. Um, the reasoning on this, I don't know why, why our meetings are normally the third week of June or whatever in, uh, typically. Uh, but we are looking at, uh, with, as of now, we have, uh, board member Amy Morrison, who we need to provide ample time to replace, uh, her vacant seat or appoint someone to that seat. Uh, in looking at the calendar, uh, we were going to be past the thirty-day window, uh, when her resignation was effective. So, we, uh, we, this is on the agenda just to move it earlier up to give us a little, uh, more time within that window to get the seat replaced, be appointed, I should say. That's where, that's where we're at. If anyone has any other comments or questions on, on the, the meaning or the reasons behind that move, uh, or if there are any conflicts or discussion.
No conflicts, but do we, we don't have to wait till her last day to start advertising for letters of interest, do we?
No, we don't. Um, and it has been brought up to, uh, you gave me a printout the last time we met or whatever about showing the, the timeline on that. Can we revisit what that timeline looks like in, um, appointing?
Yep, and you know what, my computer internet, I'll see if I can get it up and running. But, um, I might ask Don to clarify this, but we were talking about, so we have thirty days. Uh, we want to make sure, so the timeline, we want to, um, put out the, um, just the PSA indicating that there's an open board position, uh, highlight and indicate when the applications, uh, from the community, if anyone is interested in applying for that, uh, open position. At which point, um, I believe we go from posting that. And our hope is to try to put that... And our hope is to try to put that PSA out within the next, we're looking at, um, I think next week we're looking around the thirteenth, trying to get it out there, giving, I think, until the twenty-fifth to get names at that point, uh, the twenty-fifth, which I believe is a Wednesday. Uh, we'll give through, I wanna say Memorial Day to remu- review those, and then, um, I think we're looking at the first of June. No, that's not right. Do you have that deadline, do you have that, I'm trying to remember what the dates were. Okay.
Um.
Give me one second, I'll see if I can pull up my calendar.
Yeah, I just got the calendar up in front of me.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, if those, like you said, it'd be a week and a half window of the information going out saying that the board is seeking letters of interest. So it would be a week and a half between May thirteenth, which is a Friday, and then May twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. And then when the board met on June one, uh, well, so I guess it would be, 'cause on this email that you guys, that you sent, uh, who'd announce the candidates and begin accepting public input, that would probably be on the twenty-fifth, yeah? You'd just say who's all submitted letters. And then we would have, yeah, through that weekend, and then on the first during that meeting, there would be, uh, the interview process, uh, and then the board voting on who to appoint to the seat. So that's about how that process is gonna look out, and we can get these numbers, like these firm dates, so also you know what to expect. Good? I didn't mean to take it from you.
No, it's okay, I just was pointing out to you, no, that's fine. So we just wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to allow for, um, you know, the, the public input as well as we're going through the process.
Yeah.
And with the Memorial Day holiday following on that Monday, we wanted to make sure that we, um, had that information a little earlier, so we had that time.
Okay. Memorial Day's the thirtieth of May, is that?
Yes.
Right, okay. All right. Uh, the policy, uh, looks like it's nine two two three. Noted that, and, yeah. Oh, because of you, the information you sent, so thank you. Um, yeah, so check out nine two two three, and, uh, that'll give you a little more, more information on that. Okay, any other questions? Uh, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and vote, uh, we just need to, any, uh, the motion on the table is to reschedule our June school board meeting to June first, twenty twenty-two. Anyone opposed? Being done, motion passes, so our next, uh, regular school board meeting will be June first. All right, no, sorry.
Oh, just sorry, do we know if it's gonna be here? Do we have the room?
We haven't put in the request yet, but we'll go ahead and put in the request and see if we can have it here. If not, we'll let everybody know and probably have it at the, um, district office boardroom. I suspect, we'll check, um, I suspect it's gonna be pretty busy in June.
That's what I was thinking, I was, I, we might as well.
I would not be surprised if we'll be library too, yeah, we can, we'll find a spot for it.
Great, all right, uh, moving on to item thirteen D, approval of BP three thousand concepts and roles on first reading.
I move to approve BP three thousand business and, uh, non-instructional operations, concepts and roles in first reading as presented.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three thousand business and non-instructional operations, concepts and roles in first reading as presented. Uh, so the wording on our administrative agenda, this update clarifies the working relationship between the board and superintendent as well as stylistic edits to better reflect the board's full practices. You all had access to these updated policies, so myself and you all a second to pull this up. Anyone have any questions or need for clarification on any of these proposed changes? Um, I wanted to say definitely at some point that, um, we have met a, a couple of times with our, with our policy committee, which has been a really great, uh, dynamic and verse, uh, what's the word, diverse group of individuals, um, and, uh, these policies go on to, in the cloud, and members of the committee look at them ahead of time, they can make notes on the side. Now, it's one of those working, uh, sort of, I don't wanna say a Google document, 'cause it's a Microsoft, but, um, it's, it's online, people look at it, and then we thoroughly get the chance to discuss it at the committee meetings. Um, so these policies have been well discussed by the policy committee, and if there are any questions that you have or hesitations to pass them, we can always send them back to the policy committee, uh, with your vote. Uh, so seeing no discussion on BP three thousand, uh, the motion is to, sorry, I need to make, get better at my verbiage. Uh, the motion was to approve BP three thousand business and non-instructional operations, concepts and roles in first reading as presented. Is anyone opposed to the motion? Being done, the motion passes. Item thirteen E, approval of BP thirty-two seventy, sale and disposal of books, equipment and supplies on first reading. A motion, please.
Approve BP two, three-two-seven-zero sale of disposal of books, equipment and supplies.
My second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-two-seven-zero business and non-instructional operations, sale and disposal of books, equipment and supplies in first reading as presented. And the notes in our agenda say this update provides the superintendent greater discretion to dispose of used district property in an amount up to five thousand dollars. The comment part, there's nobody here though, any. Okay, great, that's good to know. Uh, any board questions or, uh, comments?
Would be the designee.
In most instances, it would be the, uh, business manager or, um, you know, the director of learning. It depends on the material that we're looking potentially to dispose of, but it would be somebody from the district office, in, in most cases, it would be the business manager, 'cause they're the one that manage, uh, all fixed assets and, um, equipment that the district owns.
Okay, so, and just to clarify, the, the policy does say the superintendent shall identify to the board all inventoried personal property not needed by the district, together with the estimated value and recommended disposition, uh, but this is saying that the, anything of a lower value, just make a call.
Yeah, anything, that is correct, anything under five thousand dollars, uh, will be left to the discretion of the superintendent or designee. And so, um, yes, as, as we're looking at items that, um, are down into that, you know, lower cost, whether it's a book, equipment, whatever that might be, we can go ahead and make a determination if that's something. And in most instances, what we'll try to do is see if we can, um, go through surplus sale, uh, see if there's any resources, um, or any mechanism to, you know, instead of just putting it into a landfill, try to get it, you know, somebody who might be able to utilize it, but, um, that it would be, anything under five thousand dollars would fall under the discretion of the superintendent or designee.
Great, okay, thanks for clarifying that. What's your, um, turn your mic on?
Where would those funds go then? Say, uh, somebody.
They would go back into the general funds.
Okay, let's go, let's go ahead and vote. Now, with this, with a, since money's involved, we're not spending money, but we're approving money, do we have to do a roll call vote in those situations, or can we just regular? Anyone opposed, do we know?
We're actually just approving policy, we're not actually spending money on anything, so.
Right, that's what I, that's what I thought, I.
We should be, we should, we're good to just vote on it.
Trying to be extra careful, okay. All right, great, uh, so it has been, uh, the motion on the table is to approve, uh, BP thirty-two seventy business and non-instructional operations, sale and disposal of books, equipment and supplies in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to the approval of this policy? Being done, the motion passes. Thirteen F, approval of BP thirty-two ninety, gifts, grants and bequests on first reading. A motion, please.
I move to approve BP thirty-two ninety, business and non-instructional operations, gifts, grants and bequests in the first reading as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve BP thirty-two ninety, business and non-instructional operations, gifts, grants and bequests in first reading as presented. Uh, this is to ensure appropriate oversight. This update establishes that all donations greater than one thousand dollars shall be brought before the board. It also states that the superintendent may apply for special revenue grants. Any board questions or discussions on this? I'll see. Um, I just, I guess, uh, we just need to make sure that our different organizations, classrooms, teachers, whoever are aware, um, 'cause I think I could see a well-intended community member or business organization come forward and say, hey, I wanna give you a twenty-five-hundred dollar donation to your upcoming travel trip that you're planning for, so, uh, the process in that case would be just to say, wow, thank you so much, uh, you'll need to bring this to the school board, need to make sure it goes through the district office, we get it on the agenda, and then, uh, the board has to actually approve that donation, yes? Okay. Any other questions or thoughts on this? Okay, the motion on the table is BP thirty-two ninety, business and non-instructional operations, gifts, grants and bequests in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to this motion? Being done, the motion passes. Moving on to item thirteen G, approval of BP thirty-three hundred expenditures, expending authority on first reading. Can I have a motion, please? Has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-three-zero-zero expenditures, expending authority in first reading as presented. Our notes on this say this update removes the requirement that the board approve or ratify all transactions. Transactions may still be subject to board approval elsewhere in board policy. Any questions? Comments or concerns from the board? Okay, uh, the motion on the table is the approval of BP three-three-zero-zero expenditures, expending authority in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to this motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. Item thirteen H, approval of BP three-three-one-five relations with vendors on first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve BP three-three-one-five relations with vendors in the first reading as presented.
Has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-three-one-five relations with vendors in first reading as presented. This update adds a conflict of interest provision for awards with federal funds. Anyone have any questions on the added language?
This one was, is the purple added, the purple underlined added language? This one was a little different, sometimes it was red, sometimes it was blue.
The language that is underlined is new, uh, and so, yes, the blue and the red and the purple are new language that is added to the relations with vendors BP three-three-one-five.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or clarifications? Okay, the motion on the table is the approval of BP three-three-one-five relations with vendors in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Being none, the motion passes on first reading. All right, item thirteen I, adoption of BP three-four-four-zero-point-one fixed asset capitalization on first reading. Do we need to get this on the table first, or, uh, Frank had some?
Yeah, if I can, uh, just kind of come in with us, it would be, um, in going through and looking this, uh, my recommendation to the board would be to, um, send this board policy back to committee. Uh, there was a section that, um, uh, doesn't line up with, uh, the fixed asset, um, uh, limit of five thousand dollars and above, um, you know, essentially anything below five thousand dollars is not considered fixed asset. And so, uh, in the reading of this and looking at this, there was, um, some language at the very end, assets more than five hundred, but less than five thousand will be kept on the fixed asset inventory, but will not be considered capitalized assets. And that language is somewhat in, um, conflict with the, um, fixed asset language that indicates that anything under five thousand dollars is not considered fixed asset. And so we wanna make sure that we clarify that. So it'd be my recommendation that we, um, send this back to committee for review, uh, of this language, uh, so we don't have any potential conflicts between, uh, two different board policies.
Okay, and is, is the conflict in this policy as well, or it's, it's against the other one, right?
Yeah, it just, what it does is it states that, that sentence I put in, three-four-four-zero-point-one assets more than five hundred, but less than five thousand.
Right.
That reference to the five hundred dollars is, um, in the model policy, uh, for the fixed assets language, uh, which I believe is three-four-four-zero, um, sets a limit, a lower limit. And so, what it, they did in the model policy is they matched that to the fixed asset policy, but, you know, we have a higher threshold for that fixed asset amount, and so that's where there'll be some conflicts between these two policies. So we wanna make sure we clarify that with the capitalization, because this three-four-four-zero-point-one is actually a new policy for us. We don't currently have a, um, fixed asset capitalization policy on the books. And so we wanna make sure that we get this in place and lined up, and I think that's where, and we were going through and looking at, we, we just missed that in the review.
Yeah, no, good catch, uh, whoever caught that, so thank you. All right, so we don't need to vote, no, we'll just say we'll remove this from the agenda at this point, and then we'll send it back to the policy committee, and you can expect to see it come before you again. All right, uh, item thirteen J, approval of BP three-four-five-zero money in school buildings on first reading. Has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-four-five-zero money in school buildings on first reading as presented. Uh, this update strengthens best practices for the maintenance of liquid money in school buildings, um, and this was a good discussion at the policy committee, uh, from building to building, uh, what the average amount of money that schools might expect to have, uh, in cash, uh, sitting behind, or back in the office, and what's an acceptable amount to have. Um, so we found what we felt was a good medium, a happy medium for everybody involved. Uh, money's collected up to twenty-five-hundred dollars, should be recorded and deposited weekly. If it's over twenty-five-hundred, it'll be deposited daily. Individual recorded in the receipt of funds should not be the same individual who maintains custody of funds in the safe or other secured place. Whenever possible, two individuals should count funds and sign together. So just shoring up some of our practices with cash and how much we wanna be responsible for at any given time. Any questions or concerns on this policy?
Oh, this one specifically, but, so is the revision date of ten-twenty-one, is that the original date, did you guys start these politics committee meetings then?
No. No. Uh, no, we didn't. Um, we started them this spring. Uh, like, we did one in the fall, too, I think. Um, but these revision dates have come from ASAA, correct? So, this is when they visited it and came up with their revisions, sent it out to us, uh, or out to everyone. And then, it's up to us to take them and clean them up to where it's going to fit our district.
Gotcha.
So, that's what that date's from. Any questions? No? All right. The motion on the table is the approval of BP three-four-five-zero, money in school buildings in first reading as presented. Any board members opposed to this policy? Being none, motion passes. Druckin' right along. Item thirteen K, uh, the adoption of AR thirty-four-fifty petty cash funds on first reading. And again, as we remember, uh, ARs don't need a motion. This is, uh, implementation of the policy.
No.
Yeah, questions or, or do we, we don't, there's no motions on, uh, on ARs, right? I just said, we all know. Just making sure, is there anything in this that you want to ask questions about? Sorry, Blossom.
Oh, no, um, sorry for interrupting. Um, I, I, you know, we're both on the policy committee, so.
Mm.
These policies have been very fresh in mind, so I don't have any questions personally. I was trying to move, move to adopt the.
Mm-hmm.
AR.
Okay.
So, without further ado.
Yeah.
I move to adopt AR three-four-five-zero petty cash funds in the first reading as
It has been moved, uh, to adopt AR thirty-four-fifty petty cash funds in first reading as presented. Sorry, everything I said before that was really confusing. So, thank you for cutting through the confusion.
Okay.
Uh, this update re-numbers AR three-four-five-one and associates it with AR three-four-five-zero. Right. Are any board members opposed to the motion adopting AR three-four-five-zero petty cash funds in first reading as presented? Being none, motion passes. Item thirteen L, the adoption of BP three-four-seven-zero fund balance classification on first reading. Have a motion please.
Adopt, would you adopt, the adoption of?
Second. It has been moved and seconded to adopt BP three-four-seven-zero fund balance classification in first reading as presented. Excuse me. This update clarifies the definition of the committed fund balance and assigned fund balance. It also adds reference to the D uniform chart of accounts. Questions or comments or concerns from the board? Being none, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion on the table is, uh, to adopt BP three-four-seven-zero fund balance classification in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Being none, motion passes. Moving along to item thirteen M, the approval of BP three-five-one-zero, maintenance on first reading. Have a motion please.
I move to approve BP three-five-one-zero, maintenance in first reading as presented.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-five-one-zero, maintenance in first reading as presented. This update provides greater clarity regarding the superintendent's role in assuring proper inspection and maintenance of district buildings. Clearly, the language added superintendent or designee shall regularly inspect district facilities and operations and make recommendations for maintenance and capital expenditures, which help the district reach its energy consumption goals. Uh, Mr. Hauser, how frequently do you see that having to be something that you or any designee would need to do?
I think going through and regularly inspecting and just walking through the facilities, I think is something that, you know, is, is, should happen, you know, my goal would be honestly every week, getting to at least one of the buildings.
Yeah.
Every single week to see them, to just check on them. Um, part of this, too, also, I think just brought, brings attention to the fact that there are facilities that we have that, um, you know, a perfect example is the Seek building. We've got, um, you know, some, uh, gutter issues going on right there, uh, for rain, that's tripping and causing some tile damage. And going through and identifying that and being able to bring that to, you know, um, Mike Burtalaba's attention and making sure we get a work order in and get that addressed. But also going through and I think, you know, trying to find things, because it does specifically speak to energy, energy consumption goals, too.
Yeah.
Are there ways that we can be more efficient in, um, than managing and running of our buildings to, uh, you know, help reduce costs if that's, you know, possible through, uh, conversion from, um, you know, regular incandescent light bulbs to LED and/or, uh, compact fluorescents, sort of different ways like that, um, looking at it. Uh, trying to identify ways of saving money through, um, you know, uh, maybe, uh, upgrades to the heating systems or, you know, many, uh, trying to maintain or update them. Um, and so, that's kind of what I would say my goal would be in this, to myself or my designee at least once a week going through and, you know, doing a quick inspection, walking through the facilities, or at least talking to the principals, or, uh, who's kind of, um, the lead in that facility to say, these are some issues that are going on, um, you know, help us solve them.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for that, uh, context on that direction. Any other questions from board members? No? Okay. The motion on the table is to approve BP three-five-one-zero, maintenance in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to the motion? Being none, the motion passes. Item thirteen N, approval of BP three-five-one-four-point-one hazardous substances and pesticides in first reading. Can I have a motion please?
I move to approve BP three-five-one-four-point-one hazardous substances and pesticides in first
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-five-one-four-point-one hazardous substances and pesticides in first reading. This update clarifies board and superintendent roles in the management of hazardous substances. Any questions or concerns?
What, what would be considered?
Yeah, great.
Well, I think as you, I think you're so, one, oh.
(laughing)
I see the business manager wants to speak to that as well.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one of the things that we look at, the obvious one in our science classes, you know, um, chemistry classes, some of the materials there, it does speak to pesticides. I, I did want to add, um, that, you know, our grounds are maintained and managed by the city, and we did check and confirm they do not, um, use pesticides, uh, in the, um, when they're going through and doing grounds work for us. But I will also turn it over to Ms. Young, if she has, business manager Young, to see if she has anything she would like to add to that.
Uh, sometimes there are, uh, pest controls from ants to rodents and such that they would use, um, or again, it gives us guidance on making sure staff aren't bringing in their personal, uh, stuff. So, I think that would verify, you know, notice.
As of raid or bug bombs or something. And also, I was imagining, uh, science chemicals and things like that, uh, the language saying too, uh, teachers will instruct students the importance of proper handling to storage, disposal and protection with regard to all potentially hazardous substances within the classroom and other instructional areas. So, safety measures. Any questions or concerns? All right. The motion that we will now vote on is to approve BP three-five-one-four-point-one hazardous substances and pesticides in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Thirteen N. Being none, motion passes. Couple more to go. Item thirteen O, uh, the approval of BP three-five-one-five, school safety and security on first reading. Have a motion please.
Prove the approval of BP three-five-one-five.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three-five-one-five, school safety and security in first reading as presented. And, uh, this update provides stylistic edits to the management of school safety and security policy. It also adds several policy references. Questions or?
No, I just wanted to comment that, um, that the policy committee, um, had, this was also one of the policies where we had, um, great feedback from our, um, policy committee members. It was good to learn more about how we could better streamline our, um, our safety and security, um, within the school district, um, and again, um, kind of, um, figure out how long, for the, um, video surveillance that we do have, um, how long we should keep the videos, um, recording. So, it, it was a very good, um, healthy discussion and, and I'm very proud of the work that, um, is presented tonight.
Yeah, one of the big takeaway from that discussion was action sooner rather than later is always the, the best way to go. So, um, yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right. The motion we are voting to approve is BP three-five-one-five, school safety and security in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to the motion? Being none, the motion passes. And last item under new business, item thirteen P, the adoption of BP three-five-one-five-point-six, the use of school safety video surveillance monitoring systems. A motion please.
I move we approve BP three-five-one-five-point-six of school safety video surveillance.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt BP three-five-one-five-point-six, the use of school safety video surveillance monitoring systems in first reading as presented. And this update makes grammatical corrections to BP three-five-one-five-point-six. And as Blossom said, this was also a interesting point of discussion. But if you look at the policy that has been available for you, uh, yeah, there are just basically grammatical changes, uh, no real new information or old information being included or omitted.
I can jump in really fast. I do want to just highlight a couple of things. Um, this policy, three-five-one-five-point-six, uh, we did have the, um, uh, school safety, uh, three-five-one, uh, let's see, where was that? This video surveillance, um, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted a couple of key things and had it in place, uh, to again, be forward-thinking on this. Uh, just a couple of things to just make sure we have just on record, uh, school security camera systems will be installed in public areas only. Um, but we don't have camera security systems on buses yet. Um, you know, that potentially could be something in the future. And so, just wanted to be again, forward-thinking and proactive and making sure we had policies in place that, um, you know, uh, our, our community and our families were aware of as well as, um, students. Um, the other thing I think is important as far as, uh, looking at the use of school video surveillance is the viewing of video recordings. And I would just like to highlight video recordings may only be viewed by school site administrators, school officials or school staff members with direct involvement with the recording contents of the specific video recording or employees or agents responsible for the technical operation of the system. And so, it's important to remember that, you know, while we are, um, we have video surveillance, it's just not open and available for general public to come in and review. There's, you know, um, still, um, privacy, um, policies that we have in place that would protect student records and, um, students, uh, it's kind of FERPA record, you know, the, the, um, they're covered by FERPA, which, you know, videos of students are covered by that. And so, families, um, can request to see video surveillance, maybe involving their individual students, but if there's any other students involved in that, they are not able to be, um, to see that video surveillance. So, just wanted to make sure this policy really does help outline, um, what and how we utilize our video surveillance and, um, provide access to that surveillance, uh, in the event of, um, questions from families or if there's any, um, damage happening. The other reason why I think this is important to put in place is we are expanding our video surveillance. Um, you know, we have more cameras. We're going to try to get more cameras up. We've been able to add some to Kikushin this year. Uh, we have more that we want to try to put in place that have been, uh, actually ordered before COVID hit and just haven't been able to get them in place. And so, um, we want to make sure that we have a good, strong policy that outlines our video surveillance monitoring systems.
I really appreciate those comments. Um, because, yeah, it's worth going over who can view them. It happens at my place of work a lot where we have some cameras and, yeah, people will just come in, I want to see this camera on this day. And really tricky slope to go down. So, um, clearly outlines, uh, school administrators have access to that. And then, uh, of course, involving law enforcement when, when you might need to. Um, and then, yeah, that's off topic, but I appreciate you saying that there are more cameras going up, because I was wondering, do we have enough, do we have enough cameras in our buildings? And I think the answer's probably always no, but we do have some that can go up. I'm just getting time and places. Um, do all of our buildings have cameras in them, you know, even just a minimum? Or is that something we want to talk about publicly? Maybe not.
No, uh, you know, I believe all of our cameras, I'm going through and thinking through my head, I, I, I would say all of our, I'm not sure if all of our facilities do, but all of our schools have, I believe all of our schools have. There might be one facility, one school right now that might not have, um, cameras, but I believe the rest of them do have access to some cameras.
Okay, great. Any other questions or?
Is there one central hub of, or is each school?
The system that we use is all in the cloud, so it's all online-based. And so, um, when we sign up for it, uh, the video is, uploads the recordings to a secure, um, online site that we have access to, and then we can go and access that information. Um, that way we don't have to worry about maintaining servers and, you know, kind of, yeah, hard drives and all the other stuff that goes into place when you're trying to maintain and, um, store video, which is sometimes extremely, um, large in size. And so, uh, yeah, it's all online. Uh, we have a secure access to it and it is secure. We only have access to it. And so, that way it's, um, yeah, so that, that's why everybody has access to it in that way.
All right. Thank you for that information.
Thank you, Frank.
The motion is to approve BP three-five-one-five-point-six, the use of school safety video surveillance monitoring systems in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to the motion? Being none, the motion passes. All right. Good haul through your new business, everybody. Uh, item fourteen, correspondence and information, uh, which we don't have any additions to our packet this month. Item fifteen, future agenda items and upcoming events. Policy committee next meeting is May eleventh, PM, in the district office boardroom. And another reminder for upcoming graduations, uh, PHS graduation is Saturday, May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at two o'clock at the Otis Theater on the Fight Arts Camp campus. SHS graduation is Monday, May sixteenth, at seven PM in SHS Gym. And our next school board meeting is June first, at six PM. Location BD, we'll, we'll let that out soon. When is the, uh, when's Blatchley rites of passage? Is that?
Last day of.
Last day of school?
Twenty-four.
Probably should, because we, we're, we're always invited to that, too, right, as well? So, uh, we'll make sure we get an email out, uh, recapping these dates and including the, we'll get the rites of passage added, added on there as well. I think it's during the workday, so, um, it's going to be tricky for some people to get to, but, yeah.
I'd have a good follow-up question, um, for graduation and for Pacific High School graduation and Blatchley, um, ceremony. Do all the board members attend? Because if that's the case, we'll want to make sure we get a PSA out there indicating that all the board members will be in attendance for those, um, events. And I believe except the high school.
Good point.
Everyone's there. Uh, we just want to make sure we get that public notice out so we're not violating Open Meetings Act.
Um, yeah, I think, I think it would probably be safe to go ahead and put that out there that there will most likely be more than three board members at, I think, graduation, the graduations and the Blatchley. the graduations and the Blatchley, uh, ceremony.
Thank you.
Um, will just be standing and looking proud, (laugh) shaking hands and all of that. So, okay. Um, yeah, can't believe we're already here. It is May. Uh, so, item sixteen, uh, I move to adjourn. Do we not have to move to adjourn? Amy ever moved to adjourn? I miss you, Amy. Uh, the meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-eight PM. Thank you, everybody.